I appreciate you allowing me to do your swearing in, number one. Number two, I'm here with mixed emotions for what we lost. But I couldn't be happier for what we're gaining. I'm happy as I can be for you and your family. And I'm sure you'll do a fine job for the citizens of Millageville. If you would place your hand on the Bible, I'm gonna need you to raise your right hand. So this is another little detail we're gonna work out here.
Right hand. Put your left hand.
She's coming in with a left handed now. Ms. Map, if you would, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will well and truly
I will well and truly
demean myself
demean myself
as alderman
as alderman
of the city of Millageville
of the city of Millageville
for the ensuing term
for the ensuing term
and that I will faithfully
and I will faithfully
enforce the charter
enforce the charter
and ordinances
and the ordinances
of the city
of the city
to the best of my skill
to the best of my skills
and knowledge
and knowledge
without fear or favor
without fear or favor
so help me God.
so help me God.
All righty, you may lower your hand.
Good.
Is she allowed to say a few words?
She is. Everyone else can take their seat.
Good afternoon, everyone. It gives me great pleasure to stand before you. And I really want to say thank you to the Baldwin County community, to my family, to my friends, and to my relatives. Without your support, I could not be standing here today. The job that I'm about to take is a very big one. I got some big shoes to fill. So with everyone's support, standing behind me, I know that I can do a good job. I want everyone to know that I'm approachable. I'm here and I'm ready to work for you. So if there's anything that you need, and if I can do it, I'll do the best that I can. If I cannot, I will tell you I will look into it and get back with you. But I just want everyone to know that I'm here to support you in any way that I can. And I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. And especially to my church family, let me not forget. Because without them pushing me, I definitely would not be here. So thank you to everyone.
Second council work session, I mean council meeting at this time. And I'm gonna ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Give me one moment. Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Map?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
All right, we do have a quorum present at this time. If you will stand with me for the prayer and pledge. And I'm gonna ask Reverend Simmons if he doesn't mind. You're not on my agenda, but if you would render the prayer for us tonight.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for this meeting. We thank you for all the councilwomen and men. And we thank you for the city manager. We thank you for the attorney. We thank you for the reporter. Father, we just thank you that you allowed us to come to this meeting. And meeting is always in order in your sight. And we thank you. And we ask that you go before us and make the path straight. And we praise you and we magnify you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have an award and a presentation tonight. So first, I invite Mervin and Sandra to come up front with me.
It's right over behind Jenny.
Okay, first of all, training is an important part of an employee with the city of Millageville. And as each year passes, our tenured employees become more and more valuable in the knowledge base that is the city of Millageville government operations. I am pleased to present to Ms. Sandra Witherspoon, our Human Resource Coordinator with a Level One Certificate from the Georgia Local Government Personnel Association, the GLGPA. She is now certified as a Human Resource Manager.
Let me take a picture. All right, I'm gonna take three on three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
All right, congratulations again. Ms. Sandra and Ms. Witherspoon received this accreditation after taking a series of 13 classes and completing a project. Just to give a little background on what an achievement this is, the GLGPA is sponsored and administered by the University of Georgia Carl Vincent Institute of Government. And it's the only program in the state of Georgia where government employees can become certified in the human resource field. So again, let's congratulate Ms. Sandra Witherspoon. Ms. Rebecca, there she goes. I would like to recognize Rebecca Snyder to the podium for a presentation to council, please. We all know Rebecca and the wonderful job she and her staff are doing to keep beauty and history of Millageville in the minds of travelers and residents alike. And Ms. Rebecca will make some remarks at this time.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for having me. Merry Christmas to you. On behalf of our Board of Directors as well as our staff, thank you for another phenomenal year of partnership. Last year, I was really pleased to share with you that our hospitality industry had financially rebounded from the implications of the COVID-19. This year, I'm even more pleased to tell you that month over month, we broke industry records for Millageville and Baldwin County. It has been an amazing year. And we look forward to an even brighter 2023. So in the spirit of Christmas, I have a present that I'm gonna share with each of you. And in a little bit of a spoiler alert, I'm gonna let you know in advance what's in there. It is our 2022 Christmas ornament. And this year's ornament honors J.C. Grant Company as the longest-running retail shop in downtown Millageville. We wanted to honor them. And they're also our partner in selling the ornament each year. And then this year, we have for you guys a watercolor holiday card set of beautiful pictures from downtown Millageville, including a really lovely image of City Hall decorated. So we hope you'll enjoy those. And we look forward to serving you all in 2023.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
We'll go. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Rebecca.
Can you see?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Thank you, Ms. Rebecca, for the gifts. And thank you for the presentation. I can't seem to make Christmas roll off my tongue just yet. It doesn't seem like it's that time of year, but it is. All right, you all have received a copy of the November 22, 2022 council meeting and the December 2 call council meeting. Are there any corrections to either set of minutes? Is there a motion to approve these minutes as presented? Motion to approve, second. Is there any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
The minutes are adopted as official. We move to old business. And the two items there tonight is, the first is to conduct a public hearing to consider amending the Land Development Code to allow a special use of 1231 North Columbia Street. Before the clerk reads this ordinance, I will give the procedure for conducting the public hearing. Once it has been determined that this public hearing has been properly posted and advertised, the clerk will read the proposed amendment to the Land Development Code. We will then hear a report from the Planning and Zoning Administrator, including the advisory decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Council will first hear from the applicant and anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the amendment. We will then hear from anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the amendment. If anyone speaks in opposition to the amendment, we will then give the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal. But the rebuttal must be limited to the points or issues raised by the opposition. We will then give the opposition the opportunity to speak in rebuttal. They too must limit comments to the points or issues raised. Please make sure that before you speak, that you give your name and address for the record. Ordinance O-2210-10 amends the Land Development Code to allow a special use for a 10-car sales lot in the Community Commercial District at 1231 North Columbia Street. Mr. Clerk, has this public hearing been properly posted and advertised?
Yes, ma'am, it has been.
Please re-ordinance O-2210-10 into the record by caption.
An ordinance amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002, known as the Land Development Code of the city of Millageville, Georgia, the ordinance grants a special use for a car lot with 10 vehicles located at 1231 North Columbia Street.
We will now hear a report from the zoning administrator, Ms. Mervin Graham.
Hey, good evening. This property is located at 1231 North Columbia Street. It is owned commercial. And everyone knows car lots are special use. So the applicant is requesting a car lot for 10 cars. This was unanimously passed by the Planning and Zoning Board.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. I will remind anyone who wish to speak in favor or against the amendment to come to the podium and give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Willie Scott, Jr. I stay at 123142 Cobb Road, Gordon, Georgia. I'm looking to open up a 10-car car lot at 1231 North Columbia Street in beautiful Millageville, Georgia. That's it.
Any questions from the council on that? Where is this located, 1230?
Across the street from where I understand it used to be.
Okay, I got you. All right. Thank you.
All right.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this amendment?
Opposition now.
Opposition now. Yeah, I'm looking at the wrong thing. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to the amendment? Are there any questions or comments from council?
The only comment I have is that I noticed that, Mervin, this time the ordinance says has the number on there. No, the only thing that I'm saying is that I noticed that this time the ordinance has the number of cars listed in it. So we won't have to worry about, like we did with the other lot, that said so many, and then you combine, there's about 25 or 30. So this states 10, and that's what we're expecting is only 10.
Yes, ma'am.
10 or less, okay. Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure that that's understood.
All right. This concludes the presentation of evidence for... You have heard the ordinance in the public hearing. The chair will entertain a motion for this ordinance.
Move we approve?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Okay, the second item to come under old business this evening is ordinance O-2211-15 amending the current budget to allow permanent salary increase for our certified public safety positions in the police and fire departments. This ordinance had its first reading at the November 22 meeting. And I will now open up the floor for discussion.
I'm not gonna say anything. Because I thought we were supposed to have a meeting to discuss it further.
Mr. Griffith, where are we with this? Are we discussing this tonight? Or because it was brought up last time that it would be on the agenda to discuss it tonight?
No, it was brought up at the last time that it would not necessarily have to go back on the agenda this time until we had a chance to discuss it. That's what I was told. And it did... Right. Yeah, now that it's out there. So that's why I said I'm not gonna say anything. Just, we were supposed to have a discussion prior to this.
This is the second reading.
This is the second reading, okay. So this is the second reading on it.
So that's what I was told.
Mr. Griffin, could you explain to me how you are sure that the city has the money to do this and that we can maintain it?
One of the things that I shared with you all when we started the budget process for this fiscal year, what, this past February, I think, early March, was I gave you a list of potential funding mechanisms for certain things, not certain things, but for things that you all wish to put in the budget for the '22, '23 fiscal year. And one of those was the fund balance. And I shared with you that myself and Ms. Danzy, we look at fund balances, trying to make sure we have a minimum amount available to fund payment of all bills and all salaries for three months, which that equals about a million dollars a month. We were sitting at about, and I'm doing this from memory, but sitting at about four and a half million dollars of fund balance when we started that budget process. And so I shared with you all that the potential to spend a million dollars in fund balance to do some of the things that we might need to do with the budget was there. All of the budget increases that occurred, not only for personnel, but for increased supplies and expenses occurred based on, initially on that fund balance, about $700,000 of that fund balance being used. In adding the additional $2,000 for each certified firefighter and each certified law enforcement officer, that would use an additional, and I shared this with y'all, I think about three, maybe four meetings ago now, that that would use an additional $210,000, almost $211,000 of that fund balance. Making the fund balance use for this current budget without any additional revenue being generated by the city, which we think will, that if no additional revenue was generated, it would cost $920,000 of that fund balance to fund everything in the budget, including making this other $2,000 per person permanent. So with me saying initially that the potential existed to be able to spend a million dollars of fund balance to do what may need to be done in this budget, that's where this money comes from. And I can't... That money is more sustainable than us paying anything out of grant funds. But obviously, I can't, I have no, I would have no... I would not tell you all to spend any additional money out of fund balance past this point. So to answer your continuation sustainability question, we would need to generate additional revenue in order for this to be permanent. But I think we can do that with some of the things that we're looking at doing. You know, if we end up collecting it, we will generate about another $600,000 this year in property tax. And I say if we collect it, that's based on appeals and those kinds of things. We have already had conversations about changing our retirement plan, looking at changing the insurance plans and the costs of that, possibly increasing some fees. Our engineering firm brought to us almost two years ago a potential increase in water and sewer initially based on doing away with the minimum water bill for residential and then going ahead and instituting some higher rates on industrial water, which would, we would still be lower than most people around us. So there are a lot of things that we're looking at to raise additional revenue. I would not recommend anything that we put in the budget for this current budget if I did not feel like we could sustain it. But the $2,000 that I initially put in or recommended to y'all that be put in for permanent salary increases for those people, those employees, and then the $2,000 bonus that I recommended out of ARPA, I was confident in that $2,000. I'm less confident in the total being $4,000 across the board. But that's based on what we are currently generating right now. Did I answer your question? I want to make sure that I did.
You said a whole lot, Mr. Griffith, but the bottom line is, you know, when she talked about sustainability, when you talk about fund balance, fund balance is coming out of this year's fund balance. It's not guaranteed that that fund balance is going to be there to sustain, which is what she was asking. And that's been my concern the entire time. Is that, that's right. For them, when we're talking about sustainability, that's been the concern the entire time. You know, if we're just doing it just this year, and then all of those other things that you named were if this takes place or if that takes place, or if we have additional revenue, or if we can change the retirement thing, or if we can get, change the insurance rate. And none of that's guaranteed for being able to sustain the salary. And that's been the problem with it that I've had the entire time is that... And it's just like I told them back when we were discussing it before, you don't want to do something in one budget year and then come back the next budget year and say you're gonna have to have a layoff because you can't sustain it. And that's the concern that we have with it.
I think we can sustain what was initially passed in the budget.
Right, that's why we passed the budget the way we did.
And that's what you passed the budget on. I'm not as confident that we can sustain the additional $210,000, which doesn't sound like a lot of money. But in the grand scheme of things, when you pull it out of fund balance, it is.
Well, you're pulling a million, almost a million dollars away from fund balance.
You've got a sewer treatment plant that we could have anything to happen. And we have to have the money because EPD is not very forgiving.
You can't raise water rates just simply to pull the money out of the general fund to sustain something else.
But some of the things that we might spend on some of those things from general fund, we could leave over there.
Well, if we are able to do this in the next year, then we could always pass it. I mean, they've already gotten it this year. But after we know we've got it and we can sustain that, don't you think that would be a better way?
I would be more confident that the additional $210,000 in fund balance was available once we see what fund balance does for this year. I'm just looking purely at it from a financial standpoint. And these folks, by the end of the year, these folks will have realized $4,000.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
But, you know, the $210,000 concerns me a little bit. But obviously, if you all feel the need to do that, then we'll work to find the money somewhere. But Ms. Shinholster's point is exactly right. This is coming out of this year's fund balance.
That's been my problem.
And so the question to you was the sustainability piece. Do you not feel comfortable? Are you saying you don't feel comfortable with it?
I feel comfortable with what we passed in the budget.
Okay.
The additional $210,000, I'm not as comfortable with it. I'm still not saying we can't do it. But I'm saying I'm not as comfortable with it. But it doesn't come anywhere close to my lack of comfort that I've mentioned with ARPA and using ARPA funds to do the salary. Because they absolutely would not be sustainable.
No.
So with the ARPA funds, didn't we do, out of the ARPA funds, you did $2,000, right?
The $2,000, what we call the bonus, yes.
And so now we're looking at the $2,000 just from the budget itself, from the fund balance, to make it permanent.
That's correct.
And that would be the $4,000.
That would be the $4,000.
Being a total of $4,000, yes.
Okay. And that's good. But what about the other employees?
That's when we did it.
Well, and that comes back to, you know, I shared some information with y'all from DCA. And I'm still waiting on a proposal from the Regional Commission on looking at the salaries. But I... But I, what I am confident in is the almost 15% number that I gave y'all from the DCA salary information that I think it's gonna take to get all of our people up. We cannot, the city cannot afford at this point in time to take enough out of fund balance to get everybody that 15% increase that I'm suggesting be done to get people to the level where they need to be. So you absolutely are gonna have to find some additional revenue there.
Yeah. Well, you shared that with us.
Compared to some other, both municipalities and counties, and as I've shared with y'all, I know for a fact, one of them told me that ARPA money is there for us to leverage for salary, and that's what we're doing. Y'all know I have problems with that, but, you know, y'all asked me my confidence level. I'm 100% confident in the $700,000 that we're spending out of fund balance this year.
What are you doing?
The $210.
You're not.
I'm less, I'm less confident, but I think we can certainly make it work.
Okay, so this, right, with the second reading, this is the what?
The one he's not confident with.
It's not the $210?
Yeah.
It is the $210.
There it is.
So I thought too, we also discussed that once we gave that, the thousand, the five, whatever, that we were taking care of everybody across the board. But then, at the same token, we were gonna come back and look at making this a permanent part of the salary for the firefighters and the police department. However, getting everybody up to that 15%, you shared with us at the beginning of the year, we couldn't bite that whole elephant at one time, but it would gradually take place. So, I mean, hopefully.
Hopefully, based on new revenue.
And that's what, doing some other.
I want to know we got the money.
Items, what we need to discuss as a council, as to what we're gonna do to help bring in some more revenues, which is.
So at this point right now, it is not at a confident level to say?
At this point right now, I'm not confident that we can spend another $210,000 in fund balance.
Okay.
Okay. Now, as I said, if we see, I mean, y'all know that the world, and so many things in the world have changed dramatically with COVID.
And we don't know what it's gonna do.
One of them is the salary piece. It's just, what the market has put on potential salaries is just, it's crazy. And if I could figure it out, I would write a bestselling book and be in really good shape right now. There is an artificial inflation on salaries in our country based on what some industries can and will pay in order to have employees. And I think that's having an effect on municipalities, and that's the reason why staff for the city of Milledgeville and many other municipalities and counties around the country have put in to have the increases in salaries that they have. And it is about staying competitive, unfortunately. It's my understanding that, that the county, when they pass their budget, and they're on, as y'all know, they're on the calendar year with their budget, that they probably are gonna have about a 7% increase in their salaries across the board beginning in January. So it is about competitiveness, but if the competitiveness is not, cannot be funded, that's the problem. I shared with you all in my budget recommendation, which ultimately you all approved, what I felt confident in sharing. The additional dollars that I have given you can happen, but my confidence level in them being sustainable is less.
And that worries me.
So as far as ARPA, is there any more funding that we can use from ARPA?
We can use 100% of ARPA for basically anything we want to, because when I reported in the first ARPA report, I did the standard allowance, which basically said all $6.8 million of our ARPA funds were taken in as general revenue. So anything we could do with general revenue funds, we could do with ARPA funds. But those have to be spent by the end of 2026. If we use them for salary, they'd probably be spent before then. But that's an even greater sustainability worry for me.
I think, yeah, it would be.
So, given Ms. Map, you're probably not up to date on what we're talking about just yet, but what is the wheel of council regarding this ordinance tonight? That's what I guess I want to.
It's not looking good.
Madam Mayor, I think that the challenge before us is clear, and that is that across the state, we are seeing very, very competitive wages and incentives being offered for first responders, police, and fire. And as the city manager just mentioned, the county stands ready to approve an additional increase, which will apply to their police and fire response as well. Now, I do agree that all members of the employment base for the city have an important role to play, and I believe that it is our responsibility to, in the planning for this next forthcoming budget, determine what measures can be taken in order to bring those salaries up as well. However, the challenge before us is in first responders. And perhaps the greatest danger to a community is in having an entirely new police force turned over every year or two. The best thing that we can do is invest in retaining trained, educated, qualified personnel in police and fire that know the community and are familiar with standard operating procedures. The worst thing that we can do is have greenhorns at all levels in public-facing first responder positions. It may be a challenge to us in the next six months, but we have to meet, we have to answer it now and be prepared to do our homework over the next six months for the next budget. There are things that we can do to mediate the issue of sustainability, and that's something that we're going to have to address as a team. But I think the first and most important thing is to make sure that the men and women who are our first line of defense know that we have their backs and that we appreciate the work that they do and will remain competitive to keep them here in this community. Because the institutional knowledge and the training and education that they have is far more valuable than anything that we could put a dollar amount on. And so I would ask that we call the question.
I agree with you, Walter, and it sounds like I almost needed to play some music while you were giving that speech just then, that was a wonderful speech. I understand what you're saying. The only thing that we're asking is just to give us an opportunity to actually sit down and discuss it, like you said, as a group. We had the first reading at the last meeting. We haven't had a chance and opportunity to have a meeting with council so we can sit down and discuss ways and means of sustainability, other than what Finn said briefly in meetings. And, you know, I don't see where it's gonna hurt if we, for instance, pull this off of the agenda for this time and came back to address it after we have an opportunity to have a meeting, and in fairness to Ms. Map, give her an opportunity to be apprised of what we're discussing, why we're discussing it, and what's taking place. So that when, you know, because if we have an instance where someone else is missing from a meeting, her vote's gonna be critical to getting this passed and adopted. So it would be unfair to put her on the spot without having had an opportunity to sit down and discuss it so that she can understand what she's actually voting for. So I don't think it'll hurt for us to pull it off of one meeting and bring it back.
So what you're basically saying is bring it back in January, right? That's not, that's not, that's not going to.
Or at least give us time to make sure that we know we've got the money to continue to give it to them.
I'm not, y'all asked me this, but I'm not sure 30 days is enough time to determine if the potential revenue that we need to do that is enough to identify it. We can certainly identify some of it, but as we've talked about, we have to have conversations with the pension attorney, and we will look at making those changes. We've already started looking at the potential for shopping insurance, as we said we would do when it was passed for this current year, to see if we could find some cheaper insurance. Also, look at the potential for funding employee insurance and funding less dependent coverage insurance. I would, if that ends up being our decision, and I say ours, because I'm part of this too, if that ends up being our decision, I would like to consider it again, if it's considered as part of a resolution in 60 days as opposed to 30, just to give us the extra time that we need in order to be able to identify those things and know for sure the things that we can do and the dollar amounts that those are going to.
And it may come down to, if we can't find it and we want to do it or have to do it, then, you know, the only thing would be to raise taxes, and you don't want to do that because people are having a hard time meeting their things.
And that millage rate has been set for this year.
Already this year.
And as we said, the potential exists there to have some additional tax revenue just based on the assessments, reassessments. But as I said earlier, there's about 300 appeals that the county's going through now that'll change the tax digest. Any of those that are found in favor of the property owner could have an effect on the revenue that we generate.
Revenue too.
So in other words, what I'm hearing is this is, this can pretty much go into the next budget cycle.
No, no. No, no, no. We said next year, next budget cycle is July 1.
Well, we just start, we start discussing it in March, which, that will run into the discussion period.
Well, we could do another budget amendment for the current fiscal year budget.
60 days.
And make any changes there, and then move those into the new, new budget for '23, '24, as looking at the cross-the-board adjustments.
Yeah. We're talking about making this budget amendment for this budget year, but then we're talking about the major increases for the '23, '24 budget.
So I guess at this time, I was gonna call for, to amend the agenda to remove.
Well, the agenda doesn't have to be amended. There was no motion, or second on this, was there, Bo?
But didn't we, we just need a second reading on this or not?
This is the second reading and discussion.
The city manager sets the agenda, since there has been no motion, or the city manager can pull the item from the agenda without a vote. Or there can be, the ordinance has been read for a second time, there can be a motion relative to approving it, disapproving it, and somebody can make a motion to table it. There's several different ways that this can be handled.
Mr. Nishu.
Did Bo actually, did you read it?
No, I have, I didn't read it.
Oh, he hadn't even read it. The city manager can pull it at this point, since he sets the agenda.
What's your pleasure, Mr. Griffin?
Well, if you all, if you all want to find additional revenue sources before it's voted on, that's gonna take 60 days.
Approximately, maybe, maybe less.
Maybe less, but at least 60 days. And is my understanding correct, Mr. Jordan, it could be tabled for that length of time?
Well, it can be tabled, but the easiest approach right now would be simply to pull it.
Just pull it, and then you put it back on.
The first read is already done, and it'll just be a matter of when the second read.
Because if we table it, you'd have to bring it back at the next meeting, if you table it. And if you're not, if you're not ready, if you're not ready, then you need to just pull it.
It hadn't even been read, so if the consensus is that it needs to be pulled from the agenda, then you simply need to advise council that you're pulling it from the agenda.
Well, no pressure on the city manager in this situation.
We need it read and a motion, and let y'all decide what you're gonna do.
It will take me approximately 60 days to let y'all know any additional revenue that could come about and where it would come from. So if that's what you all are interested in hearing, then it would need to come off the agenda for this meeting.
So to clarify, Ms. Jordan, if I read this as a second reading, then we would be voting it either up or down.
Or table.
Or table, right, okay. If I don't read it, then the city manager has the option to pull it.
Correct.
Great, okay. So according to the city manager's pleasure, he's gonna remove it off the agenda at this time?
It will take me 60 days.
And it will take him 60 days to find some money, okay, to be able to push this ordinance through.
And we need to have a pension committee set up.
Do we need to do a motion?
Set up that pension.
Now, if he's pulling it, we don't need a motion, he just.
Yeah, no motion. Hey, y'all know I'll be like a mosquito, I'm keep on talking about the other employees also.
Oh, yeah, you know, like I do.
Just like a mosquito. I'll do it all the time.
All right, so at this time, then, we're gonna move to new business, and I'll ask the clerk to please read ordinance O-2211-16 by caption, "As the first reading of an ordinance to amend the land development code to allow the group residence special use overlay to 301 South Liberty Street."
You pretty much read it for me.
Oh, I did?
This is an ordinance, amendment, ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002, known as the Land Development Code of the City of Milledgeville, Georgia. The ordinance grants a special use for a group residence overlay at 301 South Liberty Street.
Right, this is the first reading, and I'm assigning this to the ordinance, this ordinance to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R-2212-37 by caption.
Twenty what now?
Resolution R-2212-37.
A resolution authorized an agreement with Thompson Fence and Construction Company to make certain repairs as outlined in the agreement to the Oliver Hardy Dam, Oliver Hardy Lake Dam, also known as the Carrington Woods Lake Dam.
You have heard the resolution, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is $148,570. Have we found this in the budget?
Air supply funds available to do it.
Easy answer.
Is that your discussion section?
That's all I needed.
Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
I might also add that these were based on safety inspection by this required of the state and that Mr. Simonton and his staff did, so that's the requirement, that's the reason these repairs have to be made.
Okay, let me call the agenda. Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted as official. Our December 27 council meeting and work session falls on our Christmas holiday, so ask the clerk to read Resolution R-2212-38 by caption, canceling the meeting, meetings falling on December 27.
To cancel the December 27, 2022 regularly scheduled work session and council meeting due to them falling on the 22, the 2022 designated Christmas holiday.
You have heard the resolution, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? When you're ready, Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Map, and Ms. Map?
Aye.
And then Ms. Chambers, okay.
I think the resolution is adopted. I think the resolution is adopted as official. We will be attending the Cities United Summit during our January 24 council meeting and work session, so I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R-2212-39 by caption, canceling the January 24 meeting.
A resolution to cancel the January 24, 2023 council meeting and work session due to the Georgia Municipal Association Cities United Summit.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make the motion.
I need a second, don't let it die.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'm trying to figure out why are we doing this when the summit is over on the 23rd?
It has always been done.
Not in January. We always come back for this one.
This meeting has always been canceled in January.
We used to, it used to run over to that date, but it's, the summit is over Monday day.
I agree. I mean, I will tell you, I always say it doesn't need to be canceled, but...
It always has been for travel back time.
We always come back on Monday.
So I guess...
This is based on years of...
But for the past, because I know last year, for the past four or five, when they started back after COVID, they ended on Monday with the legislative breakfast. Some people go to the Capitol that day, the rest of us come home, and still it's all over Monday afternoon, and then council meeting is Tuesday. So I'm confused.
So let me ask this. What's council pleasure? Do you want to council the 24th meeting or not?
Given the work that it sounds like this body is prepared to take up, I think we should have the meeting.
I agree with Walter.
Okay, so...
Same with me.
What?
All right.
Yeah, because that's a negative, it's to cancel it.
We'd call for a vote, and they'd vote no or yes. We have a motion and a second to adopt.
All right. Yeah, I've heard the resolution. Can I have a motion?
They did, they motioned and seconded.
I have a motion and a second, actually.
Who was it?
Dr. Lee called the motion, and Ms. Walden seconded.
So y'all know that we're meeting on the 24th of January now. Clerk, please call the roll.
Okay, so Dr. Lee?
Aye.
If you vote aye, then you cancel the meeting, and if you vote no, then the meeting will stay the same.
That is correct.
So you work, okay. Ms. Walden?
No.
Ms. Shinholster?
No.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
No.
So the 24th meeting is...
Just as part of the discussion. As long as the Cities United Summit schedule remains as it is, we will no longer bring a resolution to council, cancel, cancel, cancel the meeting on the second meeting date in January.
But I think because that last day did end on a Monday, then that gave Tuesday to travel back if you weren't...
It's always snowing up there.
Well, that might be the reason.
So there's been properly motioned?
That's just based on precedent that we have done that for so long.
But we will no longer do that. We will no longer council it on the 24th, as long as it stays the same.
As long as we...
All right.
I don't know that.
We don't have any new alcohol license applications, but we do have quite a few renewals. And as it is our practice, and if there are no objections, I will ask the clerk to present the renewals together and then ask for a motion to approve the renewals under one motion. Is there an objection to presenting the renewals en masse? Here and now, I'll ask the clerk to present the batch of alcohol renewals.
A U B M Incorporated doing businesses at The Brick, 136 West Hancock Street for beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales, consumptional premises. Little Fishing Creek Golf, 65 Highway 22S for beer, consumptional premises. Metropolis Cafe LLC, 138 North Wayne Street for beer, wine, Sunday sales and catering, consumptional premises. L Tequila Grill Incorporated doing businesses at L Tequila Grill, 168 Garrett Way Northwest for beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales, consumptional premises. Georgia Wine and Spirits LLC doing businesses at Beverage Depot, 201 Robertson Mill Road for beer, wine, liquor, packaged to go. Boot and Rally Incorporated doing businesses at Buffington's, 120 West Hancock Street for beer, wine, Sunday sales and catering, consumption on premises. Rock DJ LLC doing businesses at Ned Kelly's, 119 South Wayne Street for beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales and catering, consumption on premises. Sonya LLC doing businesses at Lads Stop &amp; Go, 1441 Vincent Highway Southeast for beer and wine, packaged to go. Danhu Shiva LLC doing businesses at S&amp;R Package Store, 850 South Wayne Street for beer, wine, liquors, packaged to go. Fritan LLC doing businesses at Kai Tai, 2470 Columbia Street, Suite 35 for beer and wine, liquor, consumption on premises. J K Enterprise Group, 201 South Wayne Street for beer, wine, packaged to go. Dahlgen Corp LLC doing businesses at Dollar General, number 1089, 1550 North Columbia Street for beer and wine, packaged to go. Dahlgen Corp LLC doing businesses at Dollar General at 207 Robertson Mill Road for beer and wine, packaged to go. Sedexo Management Incorporated doing businesses at Magnolia, 300 West Hancock Street, beer and wine, liquor, consumption on premises. Sedexo Management Incorporated doing business at Centennial Center, 251 South Clark Street for beer, wine, liquor, consumption on premises. Sedexo Management Incorporated doing business at Old Governor's Mansion, 120 Clark, South Clark Street for beer, wine, liquor, consumption on premises. Sedexo Management Incorporated doing business at Main Dining Hall, 231 West Hancock Street for beer, wine, liquor, consumption on premises. 428 Lake LLC doing businesses at Tipsy's Liquor, 1887 North Columbia Street for beer, wine, liquor, packaged to go. Beverage Company 2, 901 West Montgomery Street for beer, wine, liquor, packaged to go. Apple Georgia LLC doing businesses at Applebee's, 106 Robertson Mill Road for beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales, consumption on premises. Haya and Mahi LLC doing businesses at Stop &amp; Go, 1200 Vincent Highway for beer, wine, packaged to go. Blackbird Coffee Incorporated doing businesses at Blackbird Coffee, 114 West Hancock Street for beer, wine, and Sunday sales, consumption on premises. HAC Incorporated doing businesses at Piggly Wiggly, 731 South Wayne Street for beer, wine, packaged to go. The Velvet Elvis LLC doing businesses at The Velvet Elvis, 113 West Hancock Street for beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales and catering, consumption on premises. C Foster Enterprises doing businesses at Foster's Meat, 101 MLK Junior Drive for beer, packaged to go. Progressive Restaurant Concepts doing businesses at Pickle Barrel, 1982 North Columbia Street for beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales and catering, consumption on premises. Splat Crash Band LLC doing businesses at Dungeons &amp; Dackery's, 125 South Wayne Street for beer, wine, liquor, and catering, consumption on premises. Pho Little Saigon CB LLC doing business, well, that isn't doing business, 2601 North Columbia Street Suites A and B, beer, wine, consumption on premises. The Real Grill LLC doing businesses at The Real Grill of Millersville, 114 South Wayne Street for beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales, catering, consumption on premises. Yanami, Yaname LLC doing businesses at Stop &amp; Save, 844 West Montgomery Street for beer and wine, packaged to go. BRG Beverages LLC doing businesses at Chili's Bar &amp; Grill, 2596 North Columbia Street for beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales, consumption on premises. Rare Hospitality International Active doing businesses at Longhorn, 2470 North Columbia Street for beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales, consumption on premises. Lake Country Lanes LLC, 18184 Robertson Mill Road for beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales, consumption on premises. A F P A N, AF Pan Enterprises LLC doing businesses at Hopium, 1687 North Columbia Street for beer, wine, packaged to go. And that concludes the list.
Well, you all have heard the list. Well, before I cough a motion, I want to ask Mr. Griffin something. The restaurant by J K Enterprise on Wayne Street, are we open or not in their requesting license? Are they open? Was this the one we talked about the other day?
No.
All right, you all have heard the list. Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
I need a motion.
I'm sorry.
Second.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
All right, we have a few appointments to make tonight, or rather, reappointments. For the first one, I nominate Frank Baugh for reappointment to the Main Street Downtown Development Authority. Is there a motion to confirm this nomination?
Motion.
Second. Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Baugh is once again appointed to the Main Street Downtown Development Board. The next set of reappointments is for the members of the Ethics Committee. At this time, I nominate Dr. Victoria Womack for reappointment to the Ethics Committee. Is there a motion to confirm this nomination?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
The appointment is confirmed. I nominate Mr. Irvin Griffin for a reappointment to the Ethics Committee. Is there a motion to confirm the nomination?
Motion to confirm. Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
The appointment is confirmed. Next, I nominate Ms. Pamela Beer for reappointment to the Ethics Committee. Is there a motion to confirm this nomination?
Motion to confirm. Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
The appointment is confirmed. And finally, I nominate Ms. Carrie Jarrett for reappointment as the alternate member of the Ethics Committee. Is there a motion to confirm this nomination?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
This concludes our agenda items for tonight. We have thoroughly initiated our newest council member tonight. She has truly got her feet wet. Compliments to Councilwoman Map. I can tell we will have many productive years as a council working together to overcome the obstacles placed in our path and to build a prosperous and crime-free city. I also know that District 5 is once again well-represented. This concludes our agenda items for tonight. I would like to ask that we all keep Lieutenant Cannon from our Millersville Fire Department family in prayer. You all know he lost his mother, and they funeralized her on last Thursday to only three, four days later lose his sister. So please, let's keep them in our prayers. Is there any other comments from the council? Well, we had planned a small reception in the executive chambers to welcome Ms. Map to the Millersville City Council, but for those of you that are still here, please come to the back and enjoy some cookies and punch with us. And if there's no other questions, concerns, or comments, this meeting stands adjourned. Did I need to go back?
No, that or not.